We would like to get started. I'd like to, um, first, uh, remind everyone that we are on Zoom. So as you're speaking tonight, please speak into your mic. And, um, if your cellphones are on, put them on mute, uh, or turn them off, whichever is most convenient. But I'd like to call the Village Board meeting of Monday, August 1st to order. It is six thirty P M. And we are meeting the, uh, in-person and computer. Um, I don't see anyone on at this point, but we will go through roll calls. Uh, Trustee Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Quirk. Trustee Owens.
Here.
Trustee Secret.
Here.
Trustee, uh, Booker.
Here.
And President Montgomery. Uh, Trustee Thompson High Tower, well, High Tower Thompson is on vacation, so she will not be here. And we would invite all of you to join us for the Pleasure Nation. Uh, are there any names on our list, persons desiring to be heard? We did receive a letter, um, and it said, "All of your, uh, these," uh, someone that sent it in, and it says, "I am a person desiring to be heard." And, uh, it's from Janice Lieber, address ninety-two seventy-four North Fifty-first Street, Brown Deer, and her phone number is listed. Um, she says, "It has come to my attention that there is a possibility of making part of Fifty-first Street in a similar fashion that you have done with Perry, Kazin Road between Fifty-first and Sixty-first. I wish to make my position known that I am completely opposed to this. Few people use the road in the manner that you designed it. There's not enough space when two cars go by each other in opposite directions because mailboxes hang over the edge. People park their cars on the street, and then it makes it even more difficult to get by. Very few people use the sidewalks, either biking, walking their dogs, or simply walking. For the amount of traffic that Fifty-first Street gives, as it is one of the major exits of the subdivision, narrowing it further and making sidewalks for people to ride from the Oakleaf Trail, there's more than enough space to ride from the creek area by the village to Perry, Kazin Road. Resurface Fifty-first, but do, do nothing more. I choose to purchase a, I chose to purchase a house where the community didn't have sidewalks. I don't want to see Fifty-first change in any fashion. Thank you." So, um, I don't know if Janice has joined on that call, but that will be, uh, referred to staff. Um, Trustee Quirk? It's changed since we went to this format. We haven't had a letter. That people could actually send in their, um, requests, or they could do a review. And if you'd like to go back and check the records, please do. The next item on our agenda is, uh, report from elected officials and staff reports. Um, they are in our packet. Are there any questions on those reports? If not, we will accept them as presented. The next item is consent agenda. Consideration of minutes, July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The minutes were in your packet. Are there any corrections?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Trustee Quirk. Is there a second?
I see.
Trustee Johnson. It's been moved by, uh, Trustee Quirk and second by Trustee Johnson. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have a motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under new business, and this was, uh, presented last month, but, uh, we realized that there was the wrong, uh, classification for this license application. So this item is to consider approval of alcohol beverage retail class B license application for the sale of fermented mock beverages at Urban Beach, fifty-ninety-one West Brown Deer Road. Um, that application is in our packet, and we did have some discussion about it last month because the, uh, class that they had submitted originally was not appropriate for what they wanted to do. Are there any questions? Trustee Quirk?
So this license is for beer consumption, excuse me, on or off premises? Do they plan to allow carryouts? So they will allow carryouts to sell their own brand or another brand or, uh...
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the, uh, Trustee Owens?
I move to approve alcohol beverage retail class B license application of fermented alcohol beverages at Urban Beach, fifty-nine, fifty-oh, ninety-one, West Brown Deer.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Trustee Owens and second by Trustee, uh, Secret. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have a motion carries. Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is discuss the North Shore Fire Department and North Shore Health Department project update and North Shore Health Department funding formula. And Chief Whitaker will be presenting. Uh, Becky, are you joining him? All right.
Okay. Good evening. Um, we're here tonight to talk about a brief update on two items. So we're not looking for any action from the board tonight. It's informational only. Uh, but wanted to get some, um, information out now because I think in the next couple of months there'll be some decisions that maybe faced, uh, may come to the board, um, that may result in some of the things we're working on right now. So, uh, in twenty-sixteen, the Fire Department Board of Directors did a long-range financial plan, uh, for the department. And part of that, uh, plan was that there was three of the five stations needed some capital investment. Uh, we've completed two of those. The third station we're working on now, it's under the planning stages for the Glendale facility. That building is, um, would be the last of the three. And this, um, these projects were, uh, meant and continue to be meant to be coincided with some expiring debt, debt service we have. So in other words, taking up new debt to work toward, in fact, the updates of the projects. And these are twen-, this is twenty-year debt. Fire stations generally, from a lifespan, are looked at in capital plans of about a fifty-year type of building. Uh, so, uh, we've been working on that. One of the things that came, uh, I've, I had worked on with, uh, Becky and her predecessors was a way to better coordinate the services we provide as fire and EMS and rescue with the Health Department. And I think, um, through the COVID pandemic, that became even more clear that we have a lot of similar missions and similar things we need to do from an emergency preparedness standpoint, and our staff can supple-, or complement each other, um, very well. Now, we are both looking to reduce risk in the community, whether that's medical-wise, health-wise, and most really come together as one, what we're doing on a medical side. Those people that we see on a regular basis on our EMS side, um, we, I guess affectionately call for compliers. Um, generally, the Health Department is having some interaction with the same people, too. So there is, uh, there's some synergy there. So what came of that was, uh, a discussion I had with Becky's predecessor at the time, who, who was interested in trying to move the Health Department to a single location. Right now, they have two offices. Neither of them are large enough to accommodate their entire staff. Uh, and, um, so we had talked about, hey, would it be possible that we could co-locate if we did something as far as a facility? When we worked on one of our three projects that we had coming up. Uh, so the Glendale location appeared to be the best as far as availability of space and where we could put enough square footage to make that happen. Uh, so we're in that process now of, um, design and development. It's probably, the project will probably go out to bid in the next thirty days. Uh, so we would probably have bid results I was hoping for early September. I'm starting to get a little nervous about seeing them back that quick, so we may be into October at this point. But one of the things that will come up in there is an alternate bid, um, that we've been working with the Health Department on to, uh, build an additional thirty-five hundred square feet of space that they could move both their offices to one and, and be co-located with us. Uh, part of that, uh, requires that, uh, there be some amendments to the current North Shore Health Department agreement that the seven communities have. Fire departments organized it under intergovernmental agreement, so is the Health Department. Little bit different governance standpoint. The Health Department is a department of the Village of Brown Deer. You contract for services with the other six communities, whereas the Fire Department were an independent entity, basically. Um, that, uh, what I would refer to as sort of jointly owned by all seven communities. Uh, so part of that agreement says that the communities where an office is located pay more than the communities that don't have a physical space located in it. And that was something that's been in that agreement for years. I think, uh, we've been working with the, the North Shore, the seven managers administrator on trying to, uh, update some of that language in agreement, but that requires action from all seven municipalities. So that's why we're here tonight, is to talk about that and get that out on the radar screen that in the fall. This is something that probably will need to be discussed. Uh, Tyler has worked with the group and I think has come up with a viable solution that, um, I think is innovative and, and moves the discussion forward if there's interest. Uh, so with that, I would just turn it over to Becky, and she can give you a little more information on that.
Good evening. Becky Rollins, North Shore Health Department. Um, the slides are as simple as I could make them, but really walk through, um, in detail as I want, okay? Um, so this is representative of the current formula. It's really hard to explain, but in a nutshell, the formula is based on the algorithm that combines utilization and popu-, population, which is a little outdated, especially post-pandemic. Um, the utilization number is actually, um, computed by Community Disease Investigations, which only by our fuzzy math, as close as we could get, is about twelve percent of the work we do. Um, so it, it's a number that, it exists, and it's true, it represents some of the work, but, um, it's not representative of the work of the Health Department. Um, and then again, just to reiterate what Chief Whitaker said, is that Brown Deer and Shorewood currently pay adjusted amounts because we have offices in those space, and neither office is really, um, fully what we need to operate as a unit. Um, okay. Excellent. Thanks. So the proposal that's before you, and just to get on your radar screen again, it doesn't require action tonight, is to push the North Shore Health Department into a, a funding model that is based in, um, population. So we would request funding per capita, which, if you noticed from the last slide, what we're asking to move forward from is, uh, a lower ratio, like a lower dollar amount per, um, resident in the North Shore. Um, and it just reinforces that concept that everyone needs and benefits from public health, just like everyone needs and benefits from fire and rescue services. Um, the change that is presented here is cost neutral for six of seven municipalities. It includes a small increase for Whitefish Bay that's aligned with their current population. Um, and the North Shore Health Department, myself, is committed to, um, making up any difference with grant funding, which I think we've already more than covered. So, all that to say, the current North Shore Health, um, funding formula is set through twenty-twenty-three. So, um, at this point, what we have come to a consensus that Brown Deer is willing to adjust the certain, or sorry, the current admin fee, um, which is twenty-five thousand dollars, including fifteen thousand extra in rent. Um, and then we also pay fifteen thousand dollars of rent in Shorewood. Um, but we'll, uh, have Brown Deer remain our fiscal agent. So we're not looking to move away from Brown Deer Village. We're just looking to co-locate our two offices into one that's centrally located in the North Shore. Um, the shift will require a one-year agreement for twenty-twenty-four, um, because the, the building and construction will still be happening at that point. So we'll sort of need to, uh, have a stopgap that, um, which will include a proposed percentage increase to all the municipal contributions that'll reflect just across the building. Um, and so that would align with the proposed building move in twenty-twenty-four. Happy to take questions.
Quick question, Becky.
Sure.
So you had admin costs was twenty-five thousand now. If Brown Deer remained as a fiscal agent, what would that, that be? Tyler, do you know?
Yeah, so if you want to go back to the slide one or two ago, Karen, um, so right, if you kind of compare the two slides, right now, we're paying a hundred and, what is that, twenty-some?
Yeah.
And then if you go to the next one, it's down to eighty-two. So at first, it looks like, wow, Brown Deer's getting a great deal. Uh, but there's then, um, there's some administrative costs related to that, or, or we lose some rental fees. So, um, you know, that's, uh, approximately that forty thousand. Uh, we would want to maintain fifteen thousand as far as being the fiscal agent. Um, and, and if we can do that, uh, we would be a net neutral in this. Uh, now, there's potential that we could financially still come out to be positive because now all of a sudden, we would have that space vacant in Village Hall. We have no idea what would happen to that, um, space. But if, if you were to have, you know, potentially an outside agent use that and have rental income all of a sudden, that would be, you know, a, a benefit to, to Brown Deer. Um, there also might be some potentials just within our village structure that we would be able to, if we have a department or something that needs more space to utilize that instead of running, you know, uh, adding more facility space, we would have more flexibility there. So there's some cons there, but we determine as far as fifteen thousand, that would remain as the, uh, the administrative charge for us serving as the fiscal agent.
Questions? Becky, you're the chief at this point.
Sure. Um, so from a geographic standpoint, at least from our, our operation, and I, I think it's, um, probably digits and stuff and things, but from a geographic standpoint, that's sort of our hub of our operations is, is in the middle. So the resources there can go north and go south at the most, um, just a little bit west of the joint. That is, so from a standpoint of where we do a lot of our joint work, where the stations come together, like supply hub, um, central storage, that thing that people occasionally...
And they currently have the space?
The land space, right.
Land space.
The land space.
Okay.
What was the total cost?
So the, the initial estimate, um, in the, um, economy is, uh, now every quote I get, an estimate I get adds a inflationary advisory factor to it, which somehow, someone has defined that to be fifteen percent of it. I'm not sure what's going to happen. Um, but the estimated cost of the project, uh, that we're looking at now is eight point two million for the Fire Department portion and eight hundred fifty-four thousand dollars.
So over nine million, maybe because of the Ken, based on inflation?
Never know right now.
Other questions?
I think you break that out. Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And... I don't know if the time I had, um...
Shorewood.
Yeah, the Shorewood office, I think, is about fourteen hundred.
Then the other question, because you currently occupy the office at the, in the Brown Deer location. So your offices move?
We would move a majority of our offices, yeah. So it's a little bit back on the, back into the, on the Fire Department, sort of the building story of the Fire Department. So nineteen ninety-five, the, uh, seven communities created a joint fire department. At the time, the building here was under construction that were in Brown Deer, but it was not designed to be a large fire department, it was designed to be the Brown Deer Fire Department. That was the most space any of the five stations had. So they said, okay, go there for now, put your administrative offices there, and we'll figure something out. So we're thirty years into it and working through that. But for the most part, our, our facility, that building was designed to be a one community, one team, and maybe a secretary on the administrative staff. And we have, so right now, to accommodate, I have, my management staff in three different locations, um, and, and three different stations, because there's offices here, there's offices there, and so... So that's why we're sort of at this point of saying, hey, can we do something? We're looking at everyone in the same place, do our vehicle maintenance there, do our training there. People come in for training, vehicles can go in and get their maintenance while they're in training.
Trustee Quirk?
How many people in your management staff total?
Uh, there is eleven. So that includes like our fire inspectors. I shouldn't call them management staff, but what we call forty-hour staff, so most of our employees work a twenty-four-hour shift. It's a vast majority of the people we have. We have about ninety-three people that work a twenty-four-hour shift. Uh, and they are assigned to various fire stations and fire stations. Uh, and then from a, um, a Monday to Friday, eight to four type of schedule, there's been, um, a lot of stuff done. It's like clerical inspectors.
Other questions?
Did you have a question? Related to the Health Department, is there any forecast of additional staff? That's another reason why more stations needed, or...
Uh, so in the project design, so again, the Health Department's an alternate bid. They bid us separately from, or built our section, I guess, or designed it. Um, but we, I've asked that every single office is equipped to house two staff, not one. But yeah, I would love to grow in, um, in response to whatever the community health assessment says the communities need. Yeah, right now, we're at capacity, even with the new design. And so that's why we requested, um, the new space be built with room to grow in each office.
Currently, um, assuming that all your hardware, whereas your computers and stuff, is on, on a server at a certain location, or how is that working currently?
Uh, server, uh, when you have offices, it's five, I believe. So probably a lot of that is in the cloud. I'm, I think, yes, I have, I'm not, like, just if they have offices, it's just five.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, this was just presentation, information, and you'll be coming back. And hopefully, hopefully inflation won't go up.
Yeah, we'll see. The, the construction market, we told, it's calmed down.
But how much? You don't know?
How much and what went up? The question is, did it, is it not going up anymore? Did it stabilize, or is it coming back down? Lumber prices are way down, but it's just, yeah, lumber is way down.
All right. Well, thank you. The next item on our agenda is, uh, to present and discuss the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-seven draft capital improvement, C I P, plan. And that is, um, in our packet. There is, uh, um, a memo that kind of, uh, gives an overview and title. I don't know if you want to kind of give a synopsis. Again, this is, uh, for discussion, and we won't be taking any action on tonight, but...
Yep. So tonight will be the main presentation. Um, before I get into the nuts and bolts, uh, Chief Whitaker has another meeting at seven-thirty. Um, and so I asked him to stay here for an extra two minutes in case anyone had a question on the Fire Department annual capital contribution.
Oh, wait. Great. Okay. So I'll tee it up, and then after I tee it up, if anyone has questions, feel free to ask. Um, so the, the plan for tonight, um, I'm going to allow each of the department heads that submitted a request to have up to five minutes just to go through, uh, the specifics of their twenty-twenty-three requests, since those would be the ones included in the upcoming budget. And then if they want to highlight any of the twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-seven requests, especially if they're a very unique request or a significant request, um, to utilize that time. And I'll allow you just a, a little bit of, of opportunity to get to know, um, the projects and the requests a little bit more specifically. Uh, the goal, especially for twenty-twenty-three, but for the other years, to, uh, sustain, um, what we have expended in previous years, uh, so trying to operate within our, our budget for upcoming years, on, you know, slightly increases, whether that's inflation or just so you know, things that are on our radar. And as we, um, get closer to those years, uh, staff's goal would be to still operate within our, our parameters. Um, but, um, the good news is for twenty-twenty-three, we're, we're most of the way there. Uh, the memo identifies a plan and a few options that you as a board can direct staff to get us to that three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar, um, goal. You know, and it's up to you as a board if you want to hit that, go a little over or under, but just know that's going to have an impact on our, our tax levy. But the good news is we're, we're pretty much close to the way there. Otherwise, um, just a nu-, a, a few other things I just want to note. Uh, we've already, we do borrowing every two years, so we issue for geo-debt every two years. And we've done that for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. So anything that is listed in the geo-debt column, we've already committed to. Uh, so I just want to put that on your radar. But that's where we want to be conscious of, of the geo-, geo-debt that we're issuing every two years, um, that, you know, we're maintaining, uh, um, an appropriate amount there.
I want to ask you a quick question.
Yes.
Um, you have a priority rating system, but a lot of these items don't, don't mention the priorities.
Sure.
So are we to assume that those are not negotiable, that those are, um, must-do, or...
That's, I wanted to get, uh, you to see what the department head's opinion would be on the priority, uh, with one in their eyes being essential, like, we need this. It might be some kind of statute requirements, or it's just, you know, if, if you don't, it's just going to be, uh, really bad for operations. Um, a, a two rating would be, this is nice to have, um, or, or would be real, um... Yeah, strong, we strongly prefer. And then three is, this is nice to have, but we, we could maybe get by without it for a few years. So just trying to show from a department head's priority level and how they would rate each of those.
Just when you don't have the priority rating, was that just an oversight, or...
Yes. Um, yeah, that was probably the department head not adding a priority to it. Um, but I can, I can certainly walk through with the department heads on, on seeing if they want to identify that as a priority or not before we adopt it in full. So, thank you. That's a great catch. Um, otherwise, I'm trying to think if there's anything else I want to identify for you. I think the memo captures everything else I would want. Um, you know, we, we divide the, the capital improvement plan based on, you know, general projects versus utilities. Um, so, you know, a lot of those utility projects, you know, have some different funding sources that the general projects would not have. Um, I think with that being said, I'm just going to kind of go with the different department heads. Is that okay?
Yes.
To allow them to present?
Yes.
Okay. Danny, would you like to go first?
No.
Nate, are you okay going first?
Okay. Sorry. You were just...
Yeah, do not sit on my lap. I will always go to my lap. All right. Nate, why don't you go first then?
Okay, sure. Not a problem. Uh, two items from Community Services that are, uh, proposed for next year. Uh, I think everyone is very much familiar with the A P I site, the Living Room Project, uh, Ten Mile Park, as we are calling it now. That is proposed for two million, four-hundred-ninety-six thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars. We are currently very hopeful that it will receive appropriation in the federal budget. Uh, we've not heard anything new, other than that it has been kind of advanced through, to the committee level, uh, through Congressman Moore's office. Uh, this would include the full build-out of the site and the restroom facilities. We still intend to undertake demolition and clearing this year. We still intend to undertake demolition and clearing this year and design of the remainder of the park using, uh, some of our existing ARPA funds to do that. So that is one project. The other project, uh, that we have scheduled for twenty twenty-three currently is the sustainability action report at the request of Trustee Seacrest. Uh, myself, Matthew, and Tyler have been seeking quotes, uh, from various, uh, various consulting firms to provide, uh, services to, uh, to, uh, prepare and complete a sustainability action plan. And that is something that we are budgeting twenty-five thousand dollars for, to assess essentially kind of where we are and where we want to go in terms of our green and sustainable efforts in the community. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight with respect to the future years in the capital improvement plan is, uh, something that, that Trustee Johnson pointed out, uh, in our last, uh, meeting, uh, which was the at-grade intersection of Brown Deer Road and the opportunities that would be there for development with the excess land that is essentially going to be available, uh, as the intersection narrows significantly. You can kind of see it in the picture there, all of that green, uh, is, is basically photoshopped in, uh, on that picture. What it, what it is currently is, is roadway and right-of-way. Uh, I would approximate, uh, about an acre on every corner, uh, is, is about what would be left over as excess right-of-way. And throughout this project, we've had discussions with the DOT about our interest in acquiring some of that available right-of-way. The DOT has a process by which they dispose of excess right-of-way, where they would go out to appraisal. They first vet it to see if they would need it for utilities or some other purpose, and then, uh, next in line, uh, could be the village. And so what we'd like to do is kind of tee this up in the budget. Uh, we're anticipating perhaps a hundred thousand dollars an acre, uh, for desirable commercial land. Uh, so we've budgeted five hundred, just to give us a little bit of breathing room. The idea here would be to perhaps look to fund it through debt, but, uh, utilizing the TIF districts, uh, either existing or, uh, as in the original Village TIF, or perhaps a new TIF district that we create, uh, TIF five, uh, for the Business Park area and the marketplace. So with that, we're looking at this in twenty twenty-four. It really isn't certain as to the timing, because it really depends on the DOT and their process of, uh, kind of figuring out what they wanna do with the right-of-way, and, and I can tell you that they don't move very quickly. So, uh, right now, that's, that's our best guess as to the timing. But I think it's very important from, uh, an economic development perspective, these are our highest visibility corners. I think that they would, uh, it would be very helpful to us to be in control of that land and leverage that land to be able to either attract developers or development, or to package it to some of the existing landowners to incentivize them to, uh, pursue higher and better uses on some of those corners. So with that, I can answer any questions on our community services CIP.
Did you say anything about the, um, the sidewalk, the, Tetonia?
The, yeah, so that, that, I'm sorry, that is, um, that is funded through-
Through a grant.
Through CDVG funds, and that is proposed next year. That is a connection piece, a sidewalk piece from the Oak Leaf Trail, south along Tetonia to Bradley Road. Uh, it's long been requested by the Meadowside subdivision, and we think broadly it makes sense to kind of complete some of our missing links in, in our sidewalk networks along these busier roadways like Tetonia or Bradley.
And that came up before I know, so that's covered by grants?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um.
So, just got a question on the, the acquisition of the office.
Yes.
You said there about an acre. So you're looking at about a hundred twenty-five thousand per acre, because it's forward. So, and I thought the TIFs had to be used lighted properly, this is not lighted properly.
So, the TIF, to create a TIF district area-
Yep.
Uh, you definitely do need to qualify property as either having blight or some, some mix of other standards. And so, once the land is included in the TIF district, you don't need to specify each individual property as being blighted. And in fact, this property doesn't even exist right now as a piece of property, it exists just right-of-way. So, uh, so long as we geographically cover it as part of the, the bigger TIF district, we could, in fact, move forward and use TIF funds for this. Uh, it, it's a clear, uh, it's a clear allowable use of, of TIF funds in terms of property acquisition for redevelopment.
All right, any other questions for Nate? Thank you. Who's that name?
Uh, Chief Nimmer, looks like you're next on the deck, so, thanks.
Chief, um, I know last year we had some squads in the budget, did we get those? Okay, 'cause I know, you know, the issue around getting some of the, um, there was a challenge getting vehicles, so. Okay. You mean this door right up here?
Trustee Court.
Um, we have two flock cameras now, can you remind me where they are? So right now, our cameras are used for traffic. Court. So in other words, you look at the recorded, the recordings that it makes in order to use in your investigation? So the new three permanent cameras, where would you propose placing them, do you know yet? So you said Sixtieth and Bradley, and then Sherwin and Bradley? And Tetonia?
Uh, Trustee Seacrest and then, uh, Trustee.
First off, I guess, um, it's exciting to hear about the three hybrids, 'cause I know that's been something discussed. So, um, are you gonna be able to get the data from Sheraton cameras as well? Like, I'm assuming you're gonna be able to get into that? Okay. Okay. It seems silly that they wouldn't grant you access, because I don't know what they would exactly do with it. But, um, and then I know Milwaukee invested quite a few units of those, and have you heard how, do they have theirs up and running? Okay. Okay, and then one more question, um, like, is there a reason why you were like, okay, I would take the bike over a few more cameras? Like, investing like a few, like, I wonder if enough, just four more cameras on top of the three ones that you just got for?
Yes, because of the motorcycle.
Yeah, like, I'm just wondering, like, if, if that was, like, you know, like, flawless, if I couldn't get that, would you rather, you'd still a lot of that fund? I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm not-
Chief, before you continue, do we have the mic over there? 'Cause he, I don't know if people that are on the, and I just realized that.
So I, I, I think if you start looking at some of the other areas that we would look at, would be Brown Deer Road, certainly. And then north on Green Bay in that location. Now, Meck one has one on just north of County Line Road that we utilize as well, we get alerts on that. So, I think Brown Deer Road's a challenge, I mean, we could, you know, we could, and the other thing is, is that they only go about one or two lanes. And so if you're looking at, if we're looking at Brown Deer Road, we're looking probably at like four cameras on each lane. Um, but something that we can certainly look at.
So the motorcycle, correct? Training to, to, to ride a motorcycle?
So, in order to be certified as a motor officer to ride, you have to attend the training. And so the training is put on by Harley Davidson, and usually is in outside areas beyond Wisconsin. And so we'll have to send someone there for two weeks, pay for food and board. Um, but WCTC puts it on, but you have to bring your own motorcycle. And if you've ever been to that training, the motorcycle ends up on the ground quite a bit, just because it's, it's, there's a lot of movements. And so, we would- And so, we would still use it in patrol, but it would be a primary training u- unit. And so, we wouldn't damage the new bike as we would send somebody. And that training, I think, is only like fifteen hundred dollars total, and a person could just come and go. We currently have three that use a motorcycle. And again, I, you know, it, it's, it's a nice tool. The one we have now is functional, it works, it still does its job. So, um, I think it's, it's, if, an area that, if you're looking to cut something, I, I, I wouldn't, that'd be the, you know, an area where you could say, okay, we could push this off.
It has to match the bill.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. I appreciate the question. Well, no, that's. No, that. Twenty-six. Well, that, that is, the twenty-six thousand dollars is completely outfitted.
Is that right?
Correct. So, we, I mean, we get the, the government discount from Harley to get the bike. And then, that, that twenty-six thousand outfits the entire thing. It's ready to go.
All right. Other questions? All right, thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you.
And why don't you leave the mic there for anybody else that has to come up, so I won't forget it. Um, who's up next?
Um, Public Works is next up on the deck, so Matthew, sorry.
Um, so, some of our big items in, in twenty twenty-three, um, and there's some notes that Tyler has here on the bottom too, with as far as some borrowing. Um, we have our normal repaving program, and this has been, we in, we increased from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand about three years ago, when we did a reevaluation on how many streets we were paving in the village. So, that's our standard roadway repaving program, that's neighborhood streets. Um, off the top of my head, in twenty twenty-three, one of the neighborhoods is gonna be Meadowside. Subdivision is for sure gonna go. And then, we have some, uh, once this Green Bay Road project is done, some Green Bay Road, frontage roads are gonna go. And then, we have Sixty-third Street, and I think Sixty-first Street. So, that's gonna chew up, uh, twenty-twenty-three's, and then twenty-twenty-four, again, various neighborhood, uh, streets. So, this is, it's a quick process. Usually, the whole project lasts about two weeks. They come in either millin' overlay or pulverize and relay. We have some of this in conjunction, you'll hear from the water utility later, um, where we'll be repaving after the water main relay is done. So, I know Thompson will talk about Sixty-third Street and probably Sixty-first Street. So, we kinda look at the other utilities as we go and make decisions on what streets to repave or not repave. We have Bradley Road, um, this will likely get pushed into twenty twenty-four, but we have borrowed for twenty twenty-three. And I know President Montgomery, thank you, you've, I at least talked with Alderman Hamilton about this project, and I think he even went and drove the street.
Yeah.
Which was great. I have had, uh, some follow-up conversations with, uh, Mary at Milwaukee. She's, um, a senior engineer and in charge of project planning. And so, we, she seems to be all on board with this, and kinda getting it into their queue. But we wanna make sure it stays at their forefront and doesn't fall off the radar, because Milwaukee's half of the project.
Right.
That's who we need in order to keep this thing moving forward, because I think that is a priority street. If everyone's driven on that, I would say it's one of the worst streets, uh, conditioned in the village.
Drag or walk.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. And so, originally, the, here's some of the backstory there. Milwaukee has their program called High Impact Paving Program. It is highly successful, and it's, you see it all throughout the city. It's essentially a glorified millin' overlay job. They wanted to take that process and put it on Bradley Road. I was highly against that, just based on the condition of the street right now, and then it doesn't solve any of our geometry changes that we wanna make. So, right now, Bradley Road's very narrow, eleven, two eleven-foot travel lanes, and then it falls off. What we are proposing to do is expanding that road out slightly, so you'll have two four-foot paved shoulders on each side, a twelve-foot trial, travel lane in each direction, and then, an eighteen-inch gravel shoulder, and then, we'd have to redo all the ditches.
So, we would cut into the park on the one side?
Correct.
And cut into properties?
Correct. There's plenty of right-of-way out there, though, and plenty of space to do all of this, so it makes sense. We'd like to even potentially take it one step further, because of some things that we have know of in the future. The D O T in twenty twenty-seven, or twenty twenty-eight, is gonna be redoing Green Bay Road. So, picture this coming from Good Hope, coming, angling into Brown Deer, going past the park. And then, they're gonna be ending where this current project, where we're doing the roundabout in Green Bay Road, where that ends, this project would meet up with there. They have plans to run sidewalk along the park side, and they would end, I think, at Brown Deer Park, or entranceway, which is just south of Bradley Road. We would propose to take that sidewalk up to Bradley Road and potentially link a shared-use path on the Milwaukee side of the park, to even get people off the road further. But, again, that's all buy-in from Milwaukee, so we're gonna keep that conversation going, um, with their elected officials and their engineering staff. So, anyways, we have this slotted in twenty twenty-three with all of those moving parts. I would be shocked if that happens, so we're just gonna plan for it in twenty twenty-four, that Bradley Road would likely happen. Um, the other big project that we have out there is County Line Road. Um, I did also submit for grant funding. We submitted an application through the, um, D O T, the S T P, urban funding. Um, so, that's like local or improvement funding. This is money that's been released from the federal government, that's then coming down to the state level, and then, the D O T is issuing it. So, we did apply for funding, for that, the entire funding joint with Meck one, uh, for County Line Road. And we've had some current discussions with Meck one on just getting this process started. Um, this, in twenty twenty-three, you'll see a thirty thousand dollar item, that's for the engineering costs of the project. And you'll have to go through that process with Meck one on, uh, sending out an R F P, request proposal, to get engineering firms to submit. And then, this will all come back before this board, and then, we'll select one and get, get through the design. County Line Road, um, this is from, like, Spankies to Green Bay Road, and you, we would mirror the typical section that's just to the west of that location. So, again, it's, uh, you'll see the four-foot paved shoulders with the white stripe, two, two twelve-foot travel lanes, and then, we do the ditches. We're also proposing some sidewalk on that south side in the frontage road area, that would link up to Green Bay Road. Um, then, that would also link up to the Oak Leaf Trail and the existing sidewalk, where we ended the last project. So, that's that one in a nutshell, yeah.
This said that Meck one was taking the lead in the County Line. What does that mean?
So, Meck one would be the fiscal, like, all the dollars and stuff would go through Meck one?
And then, we reimburse them?
We just reimburse them. Yep.
But we would have full say in choosing the contractor, et cetera?
Correct. The thing would, everything would go through the bidding process, just like me. Um, and so, what we did last time is we entered into an M O U with Meck one, spelling that out. We took that to board for approval, and then, uh, entered into the agreement with them. If we get the grant funding, because I submitted the application, I can see that switching, where Brown Deer would become the lead then, because we have all our stuff on there, but I'm not gonna be mad if they wanna take the lead.
Matthew, as, as it relates to the Bradley Road, the construction wouldn't go up near, um, Cafe Corzon?
It, well. It, it would, yeah, end there, it would end just, um, just west of the railroad tracks.
Okay.
It would go past the railroad tracks, and then, kinda end more like by Hanson's driveway.
Okay. Because I was thinking of the, the barriers and stuff that they were talking about putting out, kinda bordering their property.
Yep. This would be, we would be east of them.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. So, those are our two big ones that we're, uh, trying to get accomplished. Um, and we wanna guess, you know, get, wait until all this D O T stuff is done, before we start tackling these other two big projects. Um, we have just our crack sealing program in there, so that's just filling cracks in the pavement. And then, the other item on here that we did put in is there, um, we have the Badger Meter, the kayak launch. And, um, this has been a challenge for us. And so, that launch has not been in for four years, I wanna say. We put the launch in, in twenty fifteen, and it did, it was successful for a couple of seasons, but we had problems during each one, um, where the launch was being dislodged from its location. We had to fish it out from River Hills one time and bring it back. It was damaged, one of the railings, and I think one of the entry points, from just debris coming down the river. And then, um, it did, got washed up onto the shore one time. And so, it's been a, a challenge, so we removed it and kept the path clean, so everyone can still go down and use it. You just may get your feet a tiny bit wet when you put your canoe or kayak. I've gone down there myself, I know it has too, it's still very usable. But, it's a challenge, and, and I actually went down there, if it was in this summer, last weekend, we had that four inches of rain at night, this thing would have been down at Esther Brook Park. It would have been gone. Um, the water was so high, it was a couple of feet just below the girders of the bridge. And with the movement of water coming in, that kayak launch would not have saved there. So, we have a proposal in there, I've talked with Badger Docs, um, they do have some solutions, but it's expensive. So, we'd have to get this ramp, put a concrete pad in, and then, also, I would propose to kind of relocate this into maybe a softer area of the river that's not taking the brunt of the current. So, that's an item that's in there. We've heard from some folks that do particularly like the kayak launch, and would like to see it go back. Um, and so, we put it in.
I know we've heard from one person, but do we know how many people actually use it?
I do not. Um, I, I, I'd probably just have to say anecdotally, I mean, I see people down there daily. I, I'm not sure. I, I know there is one, yes, very passionate individual that, that likes to use it. And we, I, I am aware of, uh, you know, some, some groups that, uh, specifically with people with disabilities, which is a, a launch for people with disabilities, which is pretty unique, uh, that, that have sorted out and have brought groups there to use it. Uh, but we don't have, have, uh, data on, on, uh, you know, user counts.
Could this be an opportunity for a, a grant, because ADA accessible, or a sponsorship of some sort, money is from somewhere else?
Yeah, we could look at that, for sure. Yep.
And maybe contact the person that's contacted that, to see?
Yes.
If they wanna be a partner?
We could.
Uh, trustee Owens, trustee Booker. Going back to, uh, streets, I don't know, something that I missed. Um, but in your diagram, uh, you have it titled, uh, Four Year Twenty, Twenty-three, and Twenty-Seven, but then, down below, you know, you list the streets from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. Are the, have those been done, or?
Oh, I apologize. That's, that, that's an old diagram. I need to update that. I, I will do that. I'll, I'll send that out.
Okay, all right.
Apologize. That's my bad. It's a good question. Um.
Know what?
I don't know. Um.
You don't know?
Yeah. I, I think this would solve it. Will it a hundred percent work? Re, I don't know. With, with the, where, what I saw with the river on Monday, when I came in, and how high it was, I actually came in here on Sunday too, because of some other flooding problems that we had, so I was driving around. And if you monitor rain and how flashy that Milwaukee River is, and how quickly it can rise, um, I'm not sure if this would have worked. I mean, I remember, I took pictures down there, because I was like, well, if this existing one was here, it'd be gone. Um, so, I'm not sure, really. I think this would definitely help in almost all cases. We'd still have to remove it every winter and reinstall it in the spring, so it would take time. Um, but would that have survived this latest rain event? I don't know.
Any associated potential liability issues of this thing, considering Brown Deer Level?
Yeah, not sure. Yep.
Well, if I may, I mean, that's why we haven't put it in, because unless we have a, a secure structure, we don't wanna be sending any of our employees into the water to retrieve that. That's where there could be an injury, and now, all of a sudden, now, we're down one or two individuals who get injured retrieving it. So, you know, I've had the position, since, you know, Matthew and I have discussed this, that unless we get a more secure location, that we, we, I support keeping it removed. And one step further, if we can't solidify funding for this within the next year, um, to sell the structure. Because at, at a certain point, it continues to take up space. Now, you know, it's, it's in the corner of the lot, but in the same sense, you know, there's a, another, you know, entity, maybe even in the area that could utilize it, um, and maybe there's a better location for it. But, uh, we wanna make a decision on this, um, and, and move forward, rather than, you know, it's been four years since, since a decision is made. So, you know, I'm hoping that through the C I P process, that we can make a decision on the kayak, uh, the kayak launch and, and move forward.
And I would echo that. Um, you know, somebody else could better, could better utilize it. Obviously, it's just sitting in our yard, so we're not utilizing it all. Um, I did go look, there's two other ones in the area that I'm aware of. There's one up in Grafton, and then, there's one in Deansville. Both of theirs are in areas of like almost stagnant water, where there's no flow coming through. So, the one in Grafton has relief ads, like, all around it, you know, it's just in this pool, um, same Deansville, which is in a very calm section. Um, where ours, we're just getting the brunt of flow coming right off the bridge, and it's fast.
I guess, the, the, it's, I mean, we don't, I don't know the history of, like, when it was purchased, and kinda like what the mindset of that was. And I think there was, um, admirable to want it, but it seems kind of, and, and I've kayaked from there too. Like, I've, we've prodded kayaks down there, and just put them in the river, it's gone. But, it gets, it can get very hairy, and I think it's just an unsafe structure, and we're not really sure what to do. I'm not sure if it succeeds. I mean, and the thing is with grant writing, I mean, who knows? When you could hear back from that, like, it could be six months, it could be like, you know what I mean? Like, so, I don't know what the most rationale type of mindset is for it, but I think we gotta be a little more realistic, and maybe it's just not the cards.
If we ended up parting ways with it here, it's still a very viable launch point during almost all other circumstances. Um, and what I would propose to do is, right now, that edge of the path is a little like jagged and could use some work. We would pave into the stream more, you know, so there's more of a, a ramp, and, and the asphalt like at the riverbed. Whereas, right now, it's cut off, because that's where this ramp started. So, if we're gonna get rid of it, I would just pave right in, so you could, almost like a bolt launch. You know, you can just walk straight into the river.
And that wouldn't be as expensive as, you know, sixty thousand dollars?
I mean, you could just, I'd have, during the road paving, you'd have the contractor come down with a load of asphalt, and we'd have it done in a couple of hours.
Yeah.
Uh, trustee John?
Uh, my question is more so related to the development of the park, Badger Meter Park. Was there an agreement with Badger Meter that you would install? So, this is something that came up later?
No, there was no agreement at all. Badger Meter, um, just, they gave ten thousand dollars to help just fund part of the park and naming rights. They did not specifically put any funding towards this item at all. This was just a piece of the overall project. They were really paying to have their name put on that sign.
And there, and trustee Johnson, there was some grant funding involved for the acquisition of the property and the build-out of the park, uh, in which, the idea really was, to trustee Booker's question, the idea really was to get access to the river, which we, up until then, did not have. And so, uh, it was really about, how can we best do that? And the, the overall accessibility component came in with this doc. But, at the time, uh, Badger Docs, and I, I still think to this, they ne- never really had installed anything on a flowing piece of water like that. And so, they kind of learned with us of the challenges.
Yeah, we did. You know, we saw pictures and some others thing, and a lot of them were on like lakes, or in, you know, like, in stagnant water areas. But, it was, we all thought it was a great idea, and it was gonna work, and under most circumstances it did, until that river, after a huge rain, and it got so high, this was not maybe the best spot for this to go.
Okay. Um, anything else on your matter? All right. So, who's up next?
So who's up there? Pass me the big.
Yeah, as she scrolls down, just for the village manager's office. Right now, facility maintenance and IT is in that, is in, under our office, so I had reached out to the IT vendor as well as our staff person to make some recommendations. I'm happy to write down any questions that you have. I just know my limits, and when it comes to facility maintenance and IT, I have limited capacity to help you there. So I'm happy to answer those questions. But in discussion, we put together a plan to identify those improvements. Really, for next year, you know, nothing, you know, really significant. Really, the significant ones is twenty twenty four. We would do a phone refresh, which you want to do every, up to ten years or so. And then we've had, been having some issues with our boiler system and our AC tiller. Those are on the docket for twenty twenty five, so just want to put those on your radar. And so those are kind of some of the bigger ones upcoming. But for, at least for twenty twenty three, you know, some of the things are kind of minor. The one thing I just want to mention is because it's been on for a while and always gets deferred is the windows. So we have a number of windows where water's getting in, in between the glass. That could just compromise the, you know, not just the aesthetics, but the actual window itself. So we've included that in again. And have determined it'll take up to four years and fifteen thousand dollars to get that done. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to give feedback or to write down those questions and get those back to you. But, you know, I just wanted to summarize those real briefly for you.
Any questions? And I see you did do your priorities.
Correct. Yep. And they're talking with IP and facility maintenance, so they're priorities. But, yeah. Danny, are you able to do Park and Rec? Yes. Up to four years. And then once we get to the four years, we feel we've dressed the, you know, a lot of the windows. Because right now, there's about sixteen to twenty windows that we've been seeing this. So to try to spread it out a little bit further, that's why we're doing it that way. And so after four years, we feel we can be done. And so these would be one-time costs through those four years to replace all those problematic windows.
Other questions? If not, yeah.
All right. Well, I learned my lesson, I will always go first at a board meeting if presented the opportunity. So the last comprehensive plan for the Park and Rec happened in two thousand fifteen, so we're way past that. And in talking to the Park and Rec Committee and Tyler and Katie, we don't really have like a set direction of where we want to go with, you know, like the parks and just like parks and recreation in general. So to get a better idea, we are looking to do a comprehensive plan. I think that will better guide us moving forward in what projects we want to complete and what improvements we want to do. Outside of that though, the one major thing that we do need to fix and kind of address pretty quickly is the Village Park bathrooms, which is also the pond concession. It has been there since the pond opened. It's the original structure. The bathrooms are pretty disgusting. All of the stuff is falling apart. The amount of maintenance we had to do this year alone was, I mean, it was kind of extensive between, you know, the water heater and just the plumbing and things like that, just to make it function and open it up for vibes and Fourth of July and just park rentals and things like that. It was kind of expensive. So looking forward, how can we improve that? How can we make the quality of that structure better for, you know, park events? For our users in the parks on the weekends? You know, we have Ten Mile Park coming, but just up towards the Village Park now, we can offer another, you know, suitable facility that, you know, bikers can use off the oak leaf and hopefully bring more people into our community. So those are the two main items coming up within the next two years. And then once we have that comprehensive plan, we hope to have more projects on the CIP.
So do you have a grant for that? Does this list it? So this thirty thousand is just for the design? And then are you looking for additional funds? Right. Trustee Clark.
And as I understand it, what you said to me was that if we have a comprehensive plan, then we can apply for grants. Because they require.
So would that comprehensive plan be similar to the one we're looking to do with Nate? Where you would invite, you'd have your committee, but also some community people to provide some input?
Correct.
Other stakeholders, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And just another comment. Past several years, parks have even been included in our budget. Like we haven't put any money towards parks at all. I don't know how many years that's been.
I think the last I saw was like two thousand sixteen.
So, you know, it's probably time.
We would love the money.
Trustee Seacrest and trustee John.
So with, kind of piggybacking back up trustee Clark, so then I would assume that, you know, once this was like a big investment, ensuring like the bathrooms and then a CIP plan and everything, that you'd want to have a budget in this? And making sure that we're keeping up the antelope?
Maintenance.
Yeah, for maintenance and.
Correct. Yeah, there is, and I think the last slide there, it does say like a certain amount, you know, moving forward based on our plan. So obviously, that can grow or, you know, decrease as we figure out our projects and things like that.
And are you looking to take this, the space that we have to do that? Remember, you checked it, you're going to the pond, you're going to do that one?
No, the brown building, that's like, so like, the, just the bathroom.
It's behind that?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, it's so bad, it can't even be cleaned, it's raw wood.
Wow. Trustee John.
Be clean it though, Julie.
How, is there fire to it?
Maybe.
Okay. Arsons in the house, huh?
Yeah, I don't know, you gotta watch yourself over there.
So this number, three seventy five, is just a plug number? You really don't have a good estimate of what it's going to cost?
That was our best guess, but as we noticed earlier, there are inflation things that we need to take into play. But I think this would be a good kind of placeholder for what we want to do.
So I used, I did that estimate. And so, well, here's what we did. We took the existing build, added a hundred fifty dollars a square foot for new construction. So that includes like HVAC, plumbing, electrical and all that stuff. And then I measured the existing building, and I did it, the new one's going to be one and a half times bigger, larger than this one. You know, typically something can get smaller. You get a little bigger, have more room, and based on talking with Danny and our guys, that's what we thought was a pretty good estimate for square footage. And then I just multiplied by a hundred fifty dollars a square foot, and that's how we got this. And that seemed to be conservative, too, so I think we're close.
I know you mentioned that you get input from stakeholders and residents. How much input are you going to get on building bathrooms?
On the bathrooms specifically, probably not a lot. I think it's one of those things where like, I mean, with Ten Mile Park, you just kind of have to make sure that it's ADA accessible and that it's like meeting the needs of, you know, like the space. And so thinking about like what kind of events we have in Village Park. I mean, that's, I think, where we would go off of like stall numbers and things like that. But as far as like stakeholder input, that's not necessarily something we need for that project specifically.
No, that one, you're going to have, work with an architect, and they're going to have all sorts of, you know, experience dealing with these. And they'll tell you kind of how big and what size stalls, everything. And then you'll work with your Park and Rec Committee, I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions, again? There you go, you weren't too painful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, we're just on the utility section, which we don't have to spend as much time on. But Tom, I don't know if you want to just summarize water? And then we can have Matthew take the lead with sewer and stormwater.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So at our July twelfth Law Commission meeting, we went through our CIP and the commissioners approved it. So I just wanted to come here and kind of touch on our biggest items. First is our water main relays, which we're trying to do every year to get rid of our old pipe that's failing. As Matthew mentioned, we team that with the street improvement projects that the village does for twenty twenty three. Is our biggest list. It's also one that's probably our top hotspot that we have in the village with the most water main breaks on it. So that'll happen in twenty three. We didn't want to do it this year, just because of all the other construction that's been going on the past two years. We thought it'd be a good way to kind of break it, take a year off. And then in twenty four, we're looking at sixty first street from Goodrich to Tower. And then also next year is our painting and maintenance of our standpipe. So every twenty years, we're required to go in and inspect and then paint our water tower. So this would be, it's at two thousand and one, actually. So this would be a little bit. And that's up significantly from what we originally had estimated, which was a little over seven hundred thousand. Again, just with the cost of everything going up, you know, we're going to have to look at getting a Safe Drink and Water loan to make up the difference. And tower painting is, you know, would actually be one of the qualifying items there with the Safe Drink and Water loan. It's actually at fifty-five percent of the market rate for geo bonds. So it's a little bit better of a rate for us. So that'll be as part of our project later this year, we'll approve, we'll apply for that loan. And then the other items are just pretty standard items in there. Hydrant and valve maintenance are being replaced in a project. And then I think our last item we have is in twenty twenty four, is pickup truck. Fifty, the last time it was purchased was in twenty eleven. So it's, we usually try to do that part of every ten to fifteen years. It's pretty similar with what DPW has recommended for replacement.
Questions? And then Matthew, you're going to do the sewers?
I'll do sewer and storm in one, at the same time here. Our sewer for the next two years are pretty standard. So we always have these three items that show up, our inflow and infiltration control, that's funded through debt and user fees. So that's where we're lining sewer mains in the village. Our lateral replacement program, and then our PPI and I, that's the money that we receive through MMSD. And so we usually let that build for a while and then do a project. So the next one that's coming is over in Emily's neighborhood, we're just kind of letting it build. We use, so inflow and infiltration control was the first phase of that. That's where we lined all of the sewer mains in that neighborhood. And now we'll come back, once we have enough money in our pot from MMSD and start lining sewer laterals down there. Lateral replacement is typically what we'll do in conjunction with the water main relay. So for instance, on sixty first street, when they're replacing water main, we're going to dig and replace sewer laterals. So a different process, but still same goal of eliminating clear water from getting into our system. Again, after these big rains, I think all of the work that we have been doing with lining sewers, especially in our two problem areas, I'm happy to report we had zero SSOs that occurred in either neighborhood. And we were out actively checking during that time. So, you know, we haven't, I haven't seen the actual flow data yet. But we're going to compile that, and I think we're going to see definitely an improvement. And then with stormwater, we have our annual ditch rehab program that we do every year as part of road reconstruction. So they're replacing driveway culverts and that sort of thing. And then in twenty twenty four, we're looking at tackling Brook Lane Basin for a, Brook Lane Basin, which is South Branch Creek, Fifty First Street. I'm sorry, that's true. This would be from Dean Road going west upstream to about Forty Seventh Street. And so that's cleaning out the river and kind of doing some river modifications there.
So that's a summary. I just wanted to allow each department head an opportunity to talk about the projects. Because you can just see the large array of projects that we have. It's pretty incredible. Once again, just highlighting the great level of expertise and knowledge and passion that each of our department heads have. In the packet, or in the memo, I included, you know, some options to get us to that benchmark. If you're looking for a specific recommendation as your manager, the kayak launch and the motor unit would be the two I would recommend taking out to get you there. But we want to provide you some different options for you to consider. In case you have different opinions, we're happy to, you know, to deliver in any way that we can. And then my only last comment, and then I'll happy to be quiet unless you have any other further questions. Derek, our finance director treasurer, he came in, or we hired him when we were about three fourths of the way through this project. So I just, as a teaser for next year, he'll be the one leading this process. But that's the only reason why he's not presenting tonight is because we were most of the way done before we hired him. So, okay?
David, I'm sorry, what did you say? You said you would recommend the kayak launch and the motorcycle?
Correct.
Uh, trustee.
Just thinking, I had a thought, question. It seems like every year, everything goes up, I understand. But has there been any thought given to those things that we buy in common with other municipalities? Go in on a joint deal? And you could say something else? Like for example, on the motorcycle? I mean, the county buys motorcycles, the city buys motorcycles. I don't know if you get the same discount as they do. It seems like every municipality has a water tower or something that needs to be repainted or whatever. Is there any way that you could talk to some of them and see who they are using and possibly? Because if you buy things in quantity, you get a better discount, you get a better price. So has any thought ever?
I can't, I can't say what's been talked about in previous years, but I think that's where, you know, especially with the relationships that we have with our North Shore partners, we are set up better than probably some other municipalities to do that. I think a trend, you know, maybe with some of the items you don't see tonight, but I think one of the trends that you'll see in the next, you know, maybe not months, but next, you know, well, one, maybe in the next few months, we'll see. But in the next few years, there's going to be opportunities for some of that. And as those arise, I will be presenting that to you as a board. I think, you know, incrementally, we can do that. And that's where, you know, as your manager, I can certainly talk with department heads on identifying those opportunities. I just don't know how often that's been explored here in Brown Deer in previous years. But, you know, we can certainly look into that.
Other, trustee John?
Yeah, with those two items that you have eliminated, what impact does it have at all on the budget? Yeah, with those two items that you have eliminated, what impact does it have at all on the budget?
So, well, by eliminating those two, it's gonna get you in line with how we have spent in past years on the capital and when it comes to the levy. So, um, so that sets us up a good start, um, when developing the 2023 budget. Um, the, you know, the service just, you know, I think, you know, Chief did an excellent job talking about the, you know, for his operations and the training, the impact there. Um, and then, you know, once again, on the canoe launch, if you just, or the kayak launch, if you decide, you know, to, to move in a different direction, you know, there'd be some actually potential revenue that we would receive. Now, I don't know what the resale value would be of that, but it would be something, it'd be something. Um, but at least for the levy for 2023, we would at least be able to keep our capital spending in line with previous years. So it's a good start.
And I do have a question with Chief, how many, um, officers would you plan to get trained this year on the motorcycle?
So we already have three, uh, I don't know, two and, you know, like Chief's, you know, maybe two more. Um, again, whether or not they get to the training next year, I'm not sure, just based on staffing levels and those types of things. Um, and back to the question, so, uh, I don't, it's a great question about the, the motor units, um, pricing. I can certainly check on that to see if there is something with Milwaukee or even the Sheriff's Department. But, so, again, I think, again, if your, if your goal is to stay there, I'm, I'm comfortable with waiting another year, um, to, to talk about it again, so, yes.
I guess my question isn't, and I don't know, I'm not like the finance person, but I feel like the cost benefit would be worth looking into, like if we're saving this amount of dollars from having them go to WCPC versus sending two to somewhere else to get trained, I feel like the, like it would actually save us money if we invested in this, when you have the money. I mean, I don't know, that's like, that's like what I'm thinking.
It does, and I can certainly get Dell's numbers so that we have those.
Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Absolutely does, yes.
That's why I asked him, I mean, he was having a dream.
Yeah, so when you start sending somebody, it gets to be costly 'cause you have to pay for travel and hotel and per diem. Correct, so, um.
Would they ride the motorcycle there?
Yes, we hope, that's the goal, yeah. Um, we have bicycles, we've had some discussions about that for the bicycles themselves. Um, there are electric motorcycles as well that are out there, um, we have not looked at that. I think probably from a cost perspective and then I would have to look at training on those, if they actually train on those. They may, I just don't know, but I don't have specifics on that.
Okay, thank you. Todd, or anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions from any other trustees related to CIP draft, uh, proposal? So you have an opportunity to, you know, think about this, we'll have another meeting in Sep- September?
Yeah, I, I don't need a vote, well, no, actually, it's your next meeting, you'll adopt a resolution. And, um, for this to be your CIP. So I think the reaction I'm looking for tonight is how you wanna get to our 315 target, I don't need a vote. But I think if, if we kinda went one by one with just some general reaction, that would give me an idea of how to draft that final CIP for your adoption. Which would be exactly how I outlined tonight, except if you of a board have a different feat, you know, feedback, I wanna give you that opportunity before we come with that final product.
So we have four options here that could help get us to that.
And it could be something even not on that list. That's just the, the four, you know, options I think we have the more, most flexibility in, but, yeah.
Tyler, could you talk about the sustainability plan, what is that and what's the outcome there, what's?
Sure, so what that would be is a, uh, a private group or consultant who would assess our facilities and, and our equipment and our vehicles and determine some opportunities that we could become more energy efficient and just some better sustainability practices. It would probably put together an action plan, uh, recommending some different ways and resources available to get us there. And then we would have to probably utilize some future capital investments to get there. So it would be a studies, you know, roadmap showing how we can get there.
Do you have a company in mind to do that with?
There's a few that are out there that we've already started engaging with, but I don't have one in particular that I would be attached to.
Do you have any online, um, resources or we can read more about what that would be? You know, websites or?
I mean, we could submit maybe one of the proposals that we've heard back from, uh, what, do you think that would be? Nate, do you have any other thoughts on that?
We could do that, I'd also recommend, uh, through the DNR, the, the Green Tier Program in their website. It talks about the various, uh, municipalities that have achieved a Green Tier status and I believe shares some of their sustainability plans, uh, or links to them.
Is there anybody in the North Shore that currently has?
Bayside.
So no, that if we don't do the Sustainability Action Plan, the other option is just we empower staff to do it. Um, which is gonna take, you know, staff isn't gonna know the amount of resources that a consultant may. Uh, but that's where, you know, and, and time is a valuable resource, that's difficult for them to, to have the time available to learn those resources available to them. So, um, you know, that's where some of the privileges come with an action plan. Um, but, um, you know, if, if that's not, that doesn't mean, i- if we were to not do the action plan, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna do sustainability, there's opportunity that we could still do that. You know, I think a prime example is Chief never mentioning, you know, hybrids, you know? And that's something that we'll talk, of course, with vehicles too and equipment on the public work side that we can also do. So, you know, the, that's why I put it on the list, cause there, I, I feel that talking with staff, a, a lot of them know some places to start to do some sustainability practices that we can just put that in motion now. If that's, uh, you know, one that you would rather do first to the motor unit.
All right, uh, trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I think that's key, what you were just talking about, I think as we look into the future, it's good to have people from outside look at us and how well we're doing things. So I would agree to keep that in the budgets, I think it's important as a village that we move forward, um, and take advantage of those skills and talents that are out there that know the industry.
So would you like to start?
Oh.
Would, um, you see some recommendations here, things that we could adjust or maybe something else that you heard tonight?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with the, with the chief, um, I just can't agree with the motorcycle at this time. Uh, but everything else, I think the flops are great, I think we need more of them within our community. Um, DPW, once again, I think they brought forth some great ideas, so. We just needed to think differently when it comes to that boat launch, I don't think we should invest in that. I think that's potentially just a waste of money. But otherwise, um, I don't see anything else that I would remove from the budget at this time.
Trustee Clark?
So the kayak launch has been so problematic, I think we should go to Plan B, which is a graded, um, you know, like a boat launch kinda thing and just abandon the, the structure. Um, you know, maybe there's some, you know, design specifics to make it, you know, uh, function better, uh, or something like that. But I think we struggled with it so long and had so many failures, I think that, you know, and it's sixty thousand, it's, you know, I guess it'll, yeah. Um, another motorcycle, um, kind of on a, on a sense about that, I mean, Chief's keen to go, like, too. Sacrifice, maybe give that up.
Yep.
Um, the Sustainability Action Plan, I wanna understand more about that. Um, I'm gonna do some reading and find out what that would result. Um, I like green initiatives, uh, and I just wanna understand that better. Um, the comprehensive plan for the, uh, recreation in the parks, um, I think that's the, that's the gateway to, you know, branch and other things, so I think that that has to, has to happen because it, it would be just about. So, um, I think these four are good to debate, um, I don't see anything else that I would put out.
Okay. Um, the kayak launch installation, I would agree, I don't think we need to invest. Um, as I ask, I'd like to know how many people are utilizing it, but we don't know that. But, um, in terms of the police, the motor unit, I would love to see it stay in. Chief, I would just hope that maybe if you can check and see if there is a possibility that we could purchase as a part of a bigger group. And because if you're gonna talk about getting two people trained and you send them away for two weeks and the amount of money and all of that, if there's kinda cost neutral, let's see if it works. Um, sustainability plan, I, I would like to, number one, learn more, but number two, I think it's not something that we have to do next, next year. I think if staff can begin to become more educated about it, maybe by the next year, it would be something we could keep in. But I do agree with the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan for parks, we need to have something in place, especially. Do you, I mean, that's one of the main things that, that Chief Whitaker noticed. When we come to, um, ICC meetings, parks is one of the things that they do. Every single meeting, and so I don't want us to be in that boat. I think it would be important for us to have, and I get people asking me all the time, how come we don't have basketball courts over here? How come we don't have this over there? And part of it is, we don't necessarily have a, a plane. And so if we can develop something that maybe we can get some, uh, support through grants, uh, to do some things and maybe have some things that are handicap accessible, uh, ADA, so that, um, more of our children can access, so. Uh, other than that, I mean, I do have a lot of things I'd love to see, but I better not add them tonight. Like staff. Trustee on?
Okay, uh, just, you know, a little preliminary review of this and that off the top of my head. And then the, the kayak thing, I mean, it is, it is nice, I guess, but nothing about what, um, uh, trustee Booker was saying, do we have any liability on something like that? You know, and I understand that it's recreational, I mean, and as, uh, President Montgomery said, we don't know how many people really utilize like that and sometimes you just can't give everybody everything that you want, you know? Just, you just don't have funds and stuff like that. Um, motorcycle, uh, I mean, not motorcycle, you guys don't know that by now, but I'm just wondering if there can be some cost effective ways that we can, you know, get any of this stuff, you know? Because, you know, from my experience being and purchasing that in, in Milwaukee County, I found that a, a number of the smaller villages or counties or, um, municipalities, they had a tendency to go out on their own and get things, not realizing that, well, you can get the same stuff, but you can get it cheaper. Um, so I would like to see that looked into, I know we can't do it overnight and that, but I think that there may be some real savings on that. Um, the Sustainability, um, Action Program, um, I need a little bit more information on that. I mean, I, I was part of, uh, when they, back in the eighties, I guess I'm dating myself, but, um, when they started recycling. I mean, it's the same thing as recycling, it's just different, you know? And there has been a lot of benefits, you know, from that, over time and that, we've come a long ways in that. Um, the comprehensive outdoor plan, um, the county is known for its parks, I mean, they've got national boards and things like that. So to me, we're part of that southeastern Wisconsin where our parks are, are really treasures in there. And so if, um, we want Brown Deer to be a place for people to come, a destination or whatever, I, I think that the park is probably one of those things that we really need to look at. So other than that, I think, um, we'll get.
Um, so the nice thing is it's seventy thousand dollars, so by just the kayak launch, we're really darn close. So trying to figure out where that, that much return income can come from, I think we might have a chance of squeezing the other three in. So I'm hoping that's kind of the goal is that, I think we all agree that the kayak launch is probably the one that needs to go and it's something investment, we don't even know if it's worth it. So, um, I'd like to look, like, look for the police motor unit, I think it'd be something that would be, you know, upfront, we pay upfront, but in the back end of it, we're actually like saving, we have a little more flexibility in how we have the programs, you know, maybe we can send one at the beginning of the year and third program through the year. So we have a little more flexibility, um, we're not stuck on a schedule of like, you gotta go at this time. Um, the Sustainability Action Plan is something that I've been working on, so I feel like a little biased in that. So I'll just put that forward, um, I don't have to explain that climate change is happening and I feel like we, we as a board have some responsibility to combat it. So, um, I know that we've been working really hard, Nate, Tyler and Matt and I, so, um, and even hearing from our fleet, that our fleet's gonna be changing too, I think you can see that it's making a difference. Um, and then the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, I mean, I go to the parks every day. So I definitely think our parks are an investment, it's green space, I think it's important for our community to have a beautiful space to share and as we're looking to push Brown Deer forward, it obviously makes sense to have the investment in that, so. I understand.
Trustee Johnson and then Tyler here to?
Yeah, one thing I just wanna add, uh, you know, we talk about parks, we talk about aesthetic aesthetics. One thing I think is sort of missing within the district is really including artists within some of the things that we do within our parks, is really bring our, our public areas to light that when we have opportunity with the Ten Mile and with Village Park, we need to bring artists and art into the village.
Beauty. All right.
So I just, I never like a board to be surprised, so. So you, what you're gonna see on the fifteenth is the same plan, we're, based on the feedback I've heard, I will be taking out the, uh, kayak launch, everything else will stay in there for now. Uh, just know, as of right now, it's, you know, about ten or so thousand over what we have typically done, um, which, it's a plan. Just know as of right now, it's, you know, about 10 or so thousand over what we have typically done, which it's a plan. In the end, what's going to matter most is what you adopt as a budget for 2023. So I think it's important, especially to trustee Booker's point, when we look at, you know, the grand scheme of things, that $10 million budget, you know, this is the plan that we're running. But when we see what the levy limit is, well, you know, that's going to give us a better idea of, you know, what we need to do in the end with the budget. But this is a plan. But we'll get to the additional information you requested on the Sustainability Action Plan, as well as maybe some other information on the motor unit that you can just have prior to making that decision on the 15th. Okay? Thank you for the feedback.
Is there anything else? I think that's it. Um, next item on our agenda is motion to adjourn, and it is 8:21, so move.